Okay, we got a few stragglers coming in. It's six o'clock and we've got several people. It's six o'clock and we've got several people that want to speak. Hopefully they'll be brief. If not, they'll lose the microphone. But we appreciate you coming tonight. It just shows this big crowd. It shows your interest and your dedication to Memorial United Methodist Church, and we appreciate you being here. Perry's gonna open with a prayer for us.
So glad to see you. Let's pray a little bit. "Gracious and merciful Father, loving God, Creator of all things seen and unseen, Lord, we depend on you every day for everything. For those who don't, they're lying to themselves. Lord, we know where our life comes from. We know where our benefits come from. We know where everlasting life comes from. Lord, we are here to do more business of your church. We're here to explain things that the Methodist Church proper has laid upon us. Lord, help us digest all this information. Help us take it into ourselves and make the best decisions possible." Tonight is not a decision night, Lord, but it's a question and answer night. We pray that your Spirit would descend upon us, bringing us your peace and your understanding and helping us, dear God, come to terms with all the things that are happening around us. Lord, keep us away from the chaos as much as possible. Help us remain true to you, your Word, your Son, and to one another, for we are your children created in your image. And Lord, we give you thanks every day for all you do for us. So thank you for being with us now and guiding us through this meeting, this time of information and understanding. And Lord, please bless us all when we leave this place tonight. Give us safe travels. Give us joy in our hearts and allow us to know, dear Father, that through all that we face, you will be with us. Give us strength and courage for the new day. In the holy name of your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray.
Thank you, Perry. Tonight's meeting's pretty important, and so I'm glad that everybody has made an effort to be here. Just a little housekeeping. First of all, thanks to the staff who came and set up all the chairs. They've done the sound and the video. Laney, Tommy, Katie has done, have put all this together. Laney did all of the work on these questions. I didn't count how many that we've got on our list, but there are probably forty or fifty. And we probably had a hundred and fifty or two hundred questions. A lot of them were duplications, but she spent a lot of time collating those so that we looked at every single question that was relevant and tried to answer them. One of the things you'll see as we answer the questions is that there are some that we could not answer, and we had certainly said so. I'd also like to thank Adam and Judd. They're both volunteers. Adam's doing the video. Judd's doing the sound. And this will be on our website, I assume, and you can look at it later on if you're so inclined. So many of you are aware that our regularly scheduled administrative council meeting, that we had a council meeting last Monday night. And one of the items that was on the agenda was a vote on whether to move forward with completing the items on the newly produced checklist for closure and separation in 2024. Everybody should have had an opportunity by now to see that checklist. The new checklist moved the goalpost on us. It moved the timeline of the completion for some of the items to December the first. And prior to that, those items that were on the checklist would not have had to have been completed until sometime after the first of January, but probably those first couple of weeks in January. So there's been some confusion about what the vote was about, and so I wanted to make that clear tonight. The vote was simply approved, all it did was simply approve the expenditure of some funds in order to obtain an appraisal of our real estate plus money for a few other items that are on that checklist. The biggest names on the items on the checklist are work that Jimmy Davis will have to do and then Laney and some of the other staff will have to do. Laney and I met today, and we're gonna be calling on some of you to help compile and produce all of that stuff by December the first. Once again, I want to say this was not, and I'd like to emphasize, it was not a vote to proceed with discernment or disaffiliation at all, but only to be prepared to do so if we decide to go in that direction. The vote to proceed with discernment, if we have one, will come at some subsequent town hall meeting. And the way it's supposed to be done, the procedure is that it will then be reviewed by the administrative council. A letter will go to the district superintendent. And that vote to go through discernment will just be a simple majority vote if we decide to do that. Now, if we go through the discernment process and decide to, we may decide to have a vote at the end of that on disaffiliation. If that takes place, then you have to have a supermajority, and that would be sixty-seven percent. All of those things, except for these items that we have to provide by December the first, all of that would take place between January the first and March the first next year. And supposedly, the same thing would happen in future years as well should we decide it's on a later date to go through the discernment and disaffiliation process. So as I said at the beginning, the only reason to address what happened at the administrative council meeting is to offer some clarity to those who may have heard something a little different, because I was getting some feedback from people that thought something else was voted on. So all we did was vote to spend some money to do the real estate appraisal and a couple of other items. So we have two primary reasons for tonight's meeting. The first one is to go over the questions that you all submitted at the previous two meetings. There were lots of duplicates, but I think Laney compiled everything and got rid of the duplication. These will all be on the screen up here. And like we did before at the last town hall meetings, I'm gonna read those questions and answer them, just like what you'll see up here. And that's not meant to think that you can't do that on your own, but there just seems to be something about hearing those while you're seeing them up there that makes a difference in how we perceive things. Plus, all of you should have had access before now to these questions and answers. They were all sent out two or three weeks ago. So that's one of the reasons. But keep in mind that on some of these questions, you'll see some what-if questions that we don't have any way to accurately answer. And so in those cases, we have said we don't really have an answer. The other reason for tonight's meeting is to allow some of you to speak and share your beliefs and opinions on the future of Methodism. We have eight people who have asked for not more than four minutes to speak, and we'll watch the time and ask that the speakers be as brief as possible. I've been asked if we will allow rebuttals from the audience, and the answer is no. What I will say is that we will be having additional town hall meetings. So if you would like to get up here and speak and offer rebuttals or something you may hear tonight, then you're welcome to get in touch with Laney and let her know. And I would like, before you, I would like to let her know as far ahead of time as possible. We had, and I don't want to call out any names, you know who you are, but we had two or three people that just came that said, hey, we want to speak today. And at some point, we had, I told Laney after the last one that we got, I said, well, we've got to cut that off. So we don't want to be here all night. So just if you'd like to speak at the next town hall meeting, give us some advance notice. And I would ask that our speakers, I don't think there's gonna be a problem, but please be respectful and polite and just use your persuasive powers to make your point. No personal attacks or name-calling or anything like that, please. So without further ado, let's get our question and answer slides. And once again, for clarity, I will read both the question and the answer, and I may even add to the answer. So the first question is, "How do we have a bishop in the United Methodist Church that is gay slash homosexual when it specifically says in the Book of Discipline it's not possible? Was this before 2019 or after? Are we not abiding by the Book of Discipline?" This did occur before 2019, is one of the answers. And it does not abide by the Book of Discipline as it's currently written. Now, there's a lot I could say in addition to that, but we're gonna try and keep everything neutral. And it's just obvious, if you have been trying to keep up with what's going on and you can get information overload, believe me, Steve, wherever you are, Steve Barber, Steve emails me something every week about he's really keeping up with it. But you can get overloaded with some of this information. So it appears that the Book of Discipline is being selectively enforced. "What are the estimated costs of disaffiliation for Memorial?" Well, we had guessed at one and a half to two million dollars. That's based on what we use right now on the finance committee for our net worth. Our net worth is about fifteen million dollars. But that is probably a high number, so it may end up being less than that. I don't think it'll be more. If you recall, also, as well as the ten percent of the net worth, we have to, in our particular case, we would have to pay two and a half times our current apportements, which are sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. So that's about two hundred thousand right there. So that's where we come up between the one and a half to two million dollars. And it does say there that the current estimate's based on the value of our property based on replacement value by the insurance companies, not by an appraisal. We are getting a commercial real estate appraisal of the property. We already have one on the parcel. "Do we have the funds necessary to disaffiliate?" The simple answer is no. "Would we retain the McLymon Trust if we disaffiliate?" Yes, although we would still be assessed a ten percent penalty as part of our assets. The McLymon Trust, is Susan, are you Susan here? Is worth right around two and a half million right now. I didn't see what the stock market did today, but if it's been like it has been the last two weeks, it's lower than that. But any cash on hand, not just the McLymon Trust, but the other investments that we have at West Path, we have some CDs at some of the local banks. The only thing I'm not sure about is CEP. CEP has a pretty good bit of, they're really operating in the black very well right now thanks to Jimmy and Elizabeth. They've gotten a lot of grants. They got a lot of PPP money, and they have invested that. It's, a lot of that's also in CDs somewhere. So I'm not sure about the CEP. But all of those, any cash or cash equivalents like stocks and bonds that we have at West Path, we also have BB and T stock, what used to be BB and T, which is Truist, which is the straight Burnside Mission Fund. That stock, that would also be included in that ten percent. The next question is, "Is this a done deal or would it all be overturned?" And that was, we had to interpret what that question might be dealing with. But if the question's regarding disaffiliation, yes, it would be a done deal. If it's regarding a potential change in the wording of the Book of Discipline, then we can't answer that question with any type of certainty. We don't know what's gonna happen at the 2024 General Conference in May in Charlotte. You can use your common sense and come to some conclusions, but that's not what we're up here for. "Has any church explored legal disaffiliation based on the Book of Discipline?" Yes, others have explored that route, but have been unsuccessful. It's currently written, if you go strictly by the Book of Discipline and disaffiliate it, we would step away and lose all of our assets. That's the way it was before 2019 General Conference. If you left the Methodist Church, then you actually, as a congregation, then you would have to step away. You would have to turn the keys over to the conference and start a new church somewhere. And that's the way the Book of Discipline still reads that way. It has not been changed. The only thing that has changed is that, as we went over at our last meeting, that there is an option for disaffiliation, and that includes what we just talked about, the ten percent plus the apportements. "So what are the chances the South Carolina Conference chooses to leave the Methodist Church?" Once again, we can't answer that with certainty, but common sense would tell you, based on what we hear and see and know and the rest of the conference, that the chances are low. "How can the South Carolina United Methodist Church get rid of Kay Crowe as the conference chancellor?" Well, as Laney has said here, she's the only attorney that's employed by the conference. And if you have concerns about her, then you need to express those to the bishop and the conference leadership, which is the district superintendents as a whole. "So with the no sunset disaffiliation clause, will the no sunset disaffiliation clause remain if Bishop Holston leaves or is removed?" It's a good question. We can't answer that with clarity either, but we would assume that a new bishop would honor the word of Bishop Holston. But there's no guarantee. "For liquid assets like the McLymon Trust, would restrictions on the trust itself present usage of those specific assets to pay for the disaffiliation requirement for liquid assets and thus require the money to come from other sources such as the general fund?" Yes, that's true. The McLymon Trust has restrictions on it that prevent us from using those funds for disaffiliation. It doesn't specifically say we can't use them for that. What it does is specifically say what we can use them for. "If disaffiliation occurs, will those who are opposed to disaffiliation have the option to withhold their ties from funding disaffiliation requirements and/or will the administrative council allow a separate fund to be created so those who seek disaffiliation can fund the disaffiliation requirements?" Yes, you can always designate where your tithe goes. If you do that, it will certainly create some headaches for Jimmy, but if that's what is decided to do, then we can do that. If that's what an individual decides to do. "The Global Methodist Church was mentioned as a home for disaffiliated traditional conservative congregations. When was this organization created, other than its creation due to the LBGTQ schism within the church? Are there other fundamental differences between the belief systems of the GMC and the UNC?" The GMC was created in 2019 after the special cause, General Conference. There are some subtle differences in the structure and the leadership. There are not a whole lot of bishops. I think there's just one bishop for the time being. Their apportionments rules are different, probably a little bit fairer than what we have. But of course, the big difference is the difference in views of human sexuality that are in the Book of Discipline now. "There was mention that over six thousand congregations have voted to leave. How many have voted to stay?" Well, as of July 23rd, there were roughly thirty thousand active churches in the United States in the United Methodist Church. So far, more than six thousand have received permission to disaffiliate, but we don't have any data to share that tells us the number of churches who pursue disaffiliation but did not get the sixty-seven percent supermajority vote that they needed to disaffiliate. And that's a shame that we don't have that, but that's probably not a statistic that anybody is gonna share. Or somebody would have to go out of their way to compile that, I suspect. "Is it true that statement, the statement that all language from the Book of Discipline regarding human sexuality will be removed is instead actually just a statement that proposals for doing so will be considered at the 2024 General Conference, and there is no guarantee that such measure will be successful?" I felt the presentation yesterday made this fact when in actuality, we cannot predict the actual changes to the Book of Discipline. And that's absolutely true. If I led anybody to believe that, then I erred. This is speculation due to a close vote at the last General Conference and the fact that we will have fewer delegates at the 2024 General Conference. And those that are fewer, by definition, are the conservative churches, those six thousand that left. So those delegates, perhaps those delegates that represented those six thousand churches, they won't be available to vote. And if they were, we really don't know how they would vote. One of them, and this is on the side, this is not factual, but I can tell you, if you have watched, or been to a general conference, it's like even the annual conference is really, I can't use that word, but it's really difficult to watch. One of the things that I have a great disagreement with is that you don't know how your delegates voted. Everything's a secret vote, and it's done electronically with a, you know, you push a button, and everything's done electronically. So you don't know how your delegate voted unless your delegate is willing to espouse publicly how they voted on different ones. So you really don't know how your own delegates voted, to be honest. "If Memorial chooses to go independent, where will we go to find a pastor?" We would go out there on the open market, just like we do to hire other people here. Laney has written in there that we assume there would be a pool of ministers looking for a church that aligns with their views if they choose to leave the conference as well. And we do know that there are some ministers who have, during the disaffiliation process, not only have their churches left, but they have also given up their credentials as well. I don't have a, that information was asked of the bishop, and he will not answer that. He deferred to the personnel committee or whatever of the conference, and they said because it's a, you know, they use the excuse that, I say, I use the word excuse, but they use a reasoning that because that's a personnel matter, that it cannot be made public. But at some point in time, we'll find out who those ministers are. "Why is the financial aspect not being fought in court?" Well, there are some places it is being fought, but just not in South Carolina so far. "Do I understand there will be no mention of human sexuality in the Book of Discipline? What about ordination and same-sex marriage? Would we have to be labeled progressive?" Well, the labels progressive and traditional have been used in order to have labels to distinguish between the two groups. But there's nothing formal about either of those two words. Any change to the wording in the Book of Discipline at this point is just, once again, pure speculation. We really don't know anything until the 2024 General Conference. "It seems very unfair to have us give a part of monies that were set aside by members of this church to be used by this church. Can we get around this requirement?" The correct answer is no. "Can follow-up meetings be held on Sunday evenings when children have programming and it would not interfere with young families and sports activities?" And we understand that, and we, you know, we have agonized over that. We've got a good crowd here tonight. I see a lot of young couples that have children that they're somewhere. They're not here with them. But we did go out of our way to provide a nursery, and Laney made a good point here in that we have other things going on on Sunday evenings, and it's just, it would be too much of a burden on the staff to try and do that otherwise. So we're gonna stick with trying weeknights, probably Monday nights, for future town hall meetings. "Do the fees associated with disassociation, that really should be disaffiliation, have to be paid in a lump sum or over time?" The fees have to be paid all at one time and are required to be put in an escrow account on March the first, and they will sit there until the annual conference votes as to whether or not your church will be allowed to disaffiliate. At that time, that money will be transferred to the conference. "If Bishop Holston's, is it Holstein or Holston? I don't think Bishop Holston is Jewish. So if Bishop Holston's promise of no sunset rule, is it in writing or just his word?" It is in writing, but could always be changed by the cabinet and a new bishop. So, you know, there's nothing written in stone, and that's what makes this so frustrating. I know the vote is on homosexuality, but I've heard other churches also base their votes on teachings coming out of seminary, that the Bible is a reference only and more ways, there are more ways to salvation and that Jesus was nothing more than a prophet. Will this be discussed by someone if it's true? Laney did the research on this, and it's just not been brought to our attention by conference officials or other churches that we know of. But it would not surprise me if that's the case. "Is the homosexual clergy vote not happening until 2028?" The vote to change or remove the wording about human sexuality in the Book of Discipline will most likely be held, we wrote that it'll be held in 2024, but we don't really know that, even in 2024. And could directly affect ordination of homosexual clergy. And we don't anticipate another vote taken in 2028. But once again, that's dependent on what happens in 2024. "I have heard the Duke Divinity School speaks of a queer God. Is this true? We're unaware of that." Fred could probably enlighten us on that. His brother-in-law is Will Willam. Is Fred here? Debbie's here, but Fred's not here. But we're unaware of that. Next question, "How would we be shielded from getting a pastor that professes views that are not biblically sound and goes against traditional views?" Well, if we remain part of the United Methodist Church and continue to take pastors that are appointed to us, we can't guarantee the pastors we receive would have a certain view- are appointed to us, we can't guarantee the pastors we receive would have a certain viewpoint either way. In the past, the South Carolina Conference has asked staff parish relations committees if they thought Memorial would be open to differing pastors and has allowed us a chance to answer that. Primarily over the years, if you've been a member, the DS traditionally would come in and ask if you were willing to have a female minister at one time, when there weren't very many, or a black minister, when very few were being assigned or appointed to predominantly white churches. So they do ask us and we have a say, but if you've ever been on the staff parish relations committee, you know that that say is minimal. We would hope that that would be the case in the future if need be, but we can't guarantee their understanding. So what's to say the South Carolina Conference wouldn't set up a church to struggle with their pastor appointment out of spite? We can't guarantee that they wouldn't, but we would hope that that would not be the case. We do know, even our district superintendent at our charge conference said to us, do you know anybody out there who wants to be a minister? We need them badly. And that's true. There are 900 before the, I'm not sure right now, so it's probably in the 800s, but there are 900 and something, were before last annual conference, 943 Methodist churches in South Carolina and only 400 or so ordained elders in the Methodist Church, which would be a full-time pastor. So only about half of the churches have full-time, Methodist churches have full-time pastors anyway. So that, that puts a burden on the cabinet when they have to start assigning ministers to different charges. Will Memorial be required to follow the Book of Discipline in light of precedents set by the liberal churches, districts and conferences dismissing the Book of Discipline? Any church that remains part of the United Methodist Church would be required to follow the Book of Discipline and whatever that wording might be. Will Memorial allow the appointment of an LBGt pastor? We cannot guarantee this question with any, cannot answer this question with any certainty at this point. Same thing with staff, we can't answer that question. Same-sex marriage, we can't answer that question. How will UMC children's Sunday school curriculum and materials be affected by the Book of Discipline change? We can't answer that question. There are a lot of, there are a fair amount of resources out there to secure Sunday school lesson material and I'm sure if it were the, the desires of the, of the church, that we could find something that was appropriate for our children. If we remain post-separation, can we be rebranded to remove references to the United Methodist Church? Well, we have the ability to rebrand at any point in time, but if we find ourselves in that situation, we would have to decide if that's the best thing for us to do at the time. It'd be hard to defend to the public if we did so. Covenant United Methodist and Taylors are just over Sugar Creek, removed United from all of their signage several years ago. Now, in, in the interim, they have been one of the bigger churches in South Carolina disaffiliated. Simpsonville also attempted to remove United from their monument sign, but were told to replace it. Now, I'm not sure that they have or not, but they were not, they were not even, they didn't even disaffiliate and they wanted to remove United. So I'm not sure if they replaced it or not. So what are the penalties for a church that does not pay apportements in full or in part? Traditionally, there have been none, other than the stigma that's attached to not paying your apportements. And believe me, the district superintendents and the, the cabinet and the bishop look to see who's not paying. How many currently attending members would leave Memorial if we remain in the United Methodist Church after separation? We, we don't have any way of knowing that. We're probably going to get a pretty good idea as we go down the road of how many people would go or stay. Can we, can we assess how this issue affected giving and attendance at Memorial? You know, we can look at the numbers and speak with members and draw conclusions, but nothing that we can, you know, put our finger on with any certainty. George asked me yesterday at lunch, or actually, George's daughter asked me yesterday if, you know, about why attendance was down. And we talked about the, the, the two things that that could be and one is was COVID. We've not recovered attendance-wise from COVID. And then the other thing is what's going on here in the Methodist Church that we're talking about here or not. So between those two things, it's difficult to tell what has caused our gap in attendance or our loss of attendance. But generally speaking nationwide, if you look at those people who are called nunners, that has to do with a, with, with the way they word their, the surveys that they do, but nunners are those people who have no affiliation at all with a religious organization, a church at all. And that number has been increasing slowly for many years, but just recently it has leaped way ahead. And it's, there are a bunch of nunners out there, lots of nunners. Did our trustees sign over the deed to our property in 1968? Yes, they did. There, there's a lot, there's a lot of legal stuff that has to do with things that we can't answer, that we need an attorney to, to look at. There's, we need, we have secured all of our deeds, but those are just current deeds that we have for all the properties that we've purchased over the years. But we really need somebody who can dig a little deeper and that probably works for a real estate attorney that can navigate the Greymore County website a little bit better than I can and find out and go back. It's all the way back to, I want to say, if I, if I'm right, like 1886, the property that the sanctuary, the old classroom building and, and where the social hall is, was deeded to the church in 1886 or 1888 by Isham Mayfield. And so, so good luck finding those records if you're a novice at searching for them. So do we have any attorneys that are members of the church who might offer pro bono or discounted services to go through the process? If there are any here, if you would raise your hand? I didn't find any. So, so that's one of the expenses that, that the administrative council voted on the other night. It's an unknown expense, but if we, we're going to have to hire an attorney and we'll probably have to, just to have somebody on, or attainer to answer some of the questions. If you've seen the document for disaffiliation, the full document, which is, it's about 12 or 13 pages, 16 pages overall, some of them are just signature pages. That's a lot, there's a lot of legal mumbo jumbo in there that we will need an attorney to interpret for us. What property assessment companies are acceptable for the conference? All you have to be is a licensed South Carolina commercial appraiser and a member of, you know, some South Carolina appraiser organization, whichever, which every licensed appraiser is. And I don't, I can't remember, Tommy, where's Tommy Simmons? Tommy, who'd you talk to?
Andrew Satter.
And that, what's the name of the company?
I'm not sure.
Oh, that's okay.
He's with CBRE. He said have it appraised by the end of the month.
CBRE is the name, they're, they're a big commercial appraisal firm and, and I think they sell real estate as well. Most, most appraisers are also in the real estate business. Could we get an appraisal done before December if church members commit to cover the cost outside the current budget through special offerings? Yes, we can. As Tommy just said, they have told us that they can do it in short order. Probably going to cost us a little bit more than it would if we just told them, get to it when you can. But there may very well be an appeal to the church because it's not in our budget. We don't, we don't have any money budgeted to do that. So there may be an appeal to the church, to the Congress to, to designate some funds to help pay for the appraisal. How many current attending members would leave if we separated? That's kind of a duplicate question that we had before and there, there's just no way of knowing that number right now. Can you separate as an independent and join the Global Methodist at a later date? Yes. There's no restriction on when you could join the Global Methodist Church. There are other options than the Global Methodist Church, although that seems to be the one that most churches that have disaffiliated have been drawn to. Does the Global Methodist Church offer legal assistance? No. Are we prepared to no longer be in connectional ministry? That, that is a good question. I have had several people ask me, what benefits do we get from the conference? And Methodism is, has always been a connectional ministry and we've always had pastors that moved from church to church. So that's a difficult question. Like I said, that's a difficult question to answer, but other than the fact that the only thing I can really put my finger on is that the Methodist Church provides the ministers that we assign and appoint the ministers that we have here. There are other benefits to being part of a connectional ministry and, but, but those are, some churches take advantage of them and some do not, some don't need to. I don't know how many of you have heard this terminology before and I didn't, I think I heard it first from Laney. Laney talked about Memorial being a generational church rather than a, a church that is, that depends completely on a minister, the minister to run things. And I think that's true. We have such a great way of ministry here with all the great things that are going on, that, that the church will, our church will roll on, no matter who the minister happens to be. Whereas at some churches, the, the minister, the minister is the focal point of the church and the church would fold up if they left. And you, you can see that, many of us have seen that with some of the evangelical churches, non-denominational churches that had a very charismatic minister and he was there for 10 years and they grew in leaps and bounds and then he left and went somewhere else and they went downhill after that. So, so we're a generational church and we, we will survive no matter what. So what conference services would we lose and need to replace if we were operating as an independent church? There are several and the most obvious being the appointment of a pastor and the connectivity with other Methodist organizations. Could appointments currently being paid, apportements currently being paid towards conference administrative fees excluding pensions be directed toward costs of separation? So yes, that's true. The only problem with that is that we're not paying our apportments now. So there's no, there's no money to be redirected at this point in time to pay for disaffiliation. What would be the cost of rebrand to eliminate the U, the United part? We don't know that with certainty. You know, you've got, we've got envelopes, we've got stationery. Of course, most people, you know, I've got, my, the office manager I used to have, she was always afraid she was going to run out of something. So I got stacks and stacks of, of stationery and, and envelopes now. I haven't written a letter in years. Email people now. So rarely does anybody even ask for a letterhead anymore. So it, the cost, the cost for that would be minimal. Would we continue to operate using the original Book of Discipline and current sections that apply to the local church? Can't answer that either. That would be pure speculation until the General Conference vote in 2024. If we were to disaffiliate and remain independent, we would most likely use some form of the current Book of Discipline. And finally, would we continue to fund ministries like Asbury Hills and Eppworth? Well, any church organization, no matter whether you're affiliated with the United Methodist Church or not, or, or an individual has the opportunity to support those ministries regardless of their affiliation. So those are our questions. If you have more questions that have been generated by these, then I hope you will email them to Laney and we'll have a chance to review those at our next town hall meeting. And the same is true of our speakers. If you would like to, if you'd like to speak at a future town hall meeting, then please let us know. So we've got eight people that want to speak. They got four minutes each. We're already, I've already run way over where I need to go. So please keep it brief. I didn't know exactly how to call these people up here, so I put them in alphabetical order.
All right, y'all, y'all all get to witness me facing one of my fears, which is public speaking. I don't do this, but here I am and I will pray this goes well. So my daughter gave me this, it's been a long time ago, hangs in my office. It's one of those little bracelets and it says, what would Jesus do? And I was wondering what I was going to say today or tonight and this was just hanging there in front of me. So I got this down and brought it. And the question is to everybody here, what would Jesus do? If you look back at Scripture, and I often call myself a red letter Christian because I really try and follow the red letter, if you've seen with the Bible, what Jesus said is red letter. I'm a red letter Christian. And I've studied it a good bit and even more than study, I listen to it a lot. And Jesus never said anything against homosexuals, never brought it up. He had every opportunity to, but he never said anything about it. So the other thing about this is the fact that I saw that number there, one and a half, 1.5 to $2 million, that we're just going to give away to disaffiliate just to tell a small group of people that their talents aren't welcome in this church. And I mean, I know it probably goes against the ground with a lot of people, but why in the world would we do that? I'm a trustee and we look at everything dollar-wise because you want to be efficient with the church. Why in the world would we give away 1.5 to $2 million? Go in debt when we're wanting to redo stuff, make the church more welcoming, have more resources for the community? Why don't we just give this away just to take the name United off of our church? And then, I mean, I still think we have the ability to pick pastors and we do control what's taught in this church. And I think that's kind of wrap it up, but I do, was sitting there looking at that, open hearts, open minds and open doors. That's the Methodist Church I love. Thank you. doors. And that's the Methodist Church I love. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate, uh, the leadership team allowing us the, the opportunity to come in and, and speak and address and, uh, a little bit about me. My name is Brett Hovis. Uh, my wife Casey Hovis is here. We've been members of Memorial for, uh, right out about 11 years. Uh, we were here as a young family. Uh, when we joined, my, my wife was pregnant with our son Houston, who is now 12. And we, we, uh, moved to Texas for about three years and joined the Methodist Church there. My wife and I are both lifelong Methodists. Uh, my grandmother worked, uh, for St. John's United Methodist Church in Rock Hill, South Carolina, under Ted Walters and, uh, Dr. Tim McLendon. Um, there's a stained glass window in that church, uh, representing my, my grandmother. And, uh, we've been, you know, my family has members of that church for 70 years. Uh, my, my wife's family, uh, probably about the same time in Hodges United Methodist Church, uh, which recently voted to, to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church. Uh, when we go back there to visit, uh, there's a stained glass window and they are representing her family. Uh, and the reason I mention all that is because we're, we're committed. Uh, we're, we're committed to, to this church. When we moved back from Texas, uh, we, we had told our friends in our cross trainer Sunday School class that, that we were coming back. Uh, there was never a doubt in our mind that, that this is where we wanted to be. Uh, but with that being said, I, I was raised in a home where you, you have to stand for something or you'll fall for anything. And, um, you know, I'm a, again, a lifelong Methodist. And so, so what I believe is that the Bible, uh, is found in the Old and New Testaments. It's the foundation and standard for what we believe and practice as Wesleyans. It is the written word of God and superior to all human authority. Wesleyans join with all evangelical Protestants in affirming that we believe neither nor less than what is manifestly contained and provided by the Holy Scriptures. So what I would challenge everyone to do is, is research the, the Wesleyan quadrilateral. If you don't know what that is, it's, it, everything that we do as Wesleyans is founded in scripture, experience, tradition and reason. And the greatest of that is being scripture. And that, that's what I believe. Um, I had a meeting recently with, uh, Linda Hannan and, uh, Laney and Luke and, uh, and Benny. And we were, we were all talking about, uh, the upcoming wedding that my wife Casey and I are catering the rehearsal for. And what, what, what I told them was that what I want everybody to know within my church is that I love this church. I'm committed to it. But I'm also not afraid to leave this church if it does not believe and line up with the beliefs of what I'm wanting to teach and raise my children in. And I think that's important. And one thing I would, uh, challenge everyone to do is that there's a, there's a series of six videos on YouTube that were generated by a gentleman by the name of Rob Renfro. He is a Houston United Methodist Minister in Houston, Texas. Uh, he, he has an article by, you know, called, uh, The Good News, and that's what's published on YouTube. But he gives six videos, um, explaining where all this started from. Um, and this, this, this topic is not just about sexuality. This has been going on for 40 years, or maybe even more. And us as Wesleyans, with what we believe as scripture being the foundation of everything is, is the most important thing. And things are, things have been changing and they're gonna continue to change. With where we're at right now, we will not get a better option than what's being put before us. But please know this, if we, for our leadership team, if we decide to go down that path, my family, the Hovis family, we're, we're committed to our time, talents, whatever we can offer, whether that's financially, any way that we can support. And, uh, and I think that it's important for, you know, for our leadership team to know that. Thank
It's been a long time since I spoke to a, a large group and it was never this big when I was teaching school. My name is Adair Johnson and, um, thank you. And I decided to speak tonight because I did not want my silence to mean that I didn't have special feelings about the Methodist Church and about this church. Um, there, I understand that there are, um, uh, financial and legal issues associated with what's going on in the Methodist Church now, which I really don't know very much about. So my feelings have to do with issues of the heart and the spirit here at Memorial. I have been a member here for close to 76 years. Probably two years more than Ralph. So, um, even, um, when I was in Columbia and Knoxville at school and when I was in Charleston, I maintained my membership here. Um, I visited other churches in these other places, but whenever I came home, it was always, um, we would come to church, my parents and whatever brothers, you know, happened to be around at the time. And I've always found it such a welcoming, um, embracing, very warm church. And, um, even in those times like in the summer or on holidays, when I would, um, be home just visiting with I decided, as I said, to speak because I would like to see our church remain this welcoming, um, embracing church for anyone who would like to come and worship with us. Um, it means a lot to me. And, um, based on what you said, I do believe this is what Jesus would do. And that is to have an, um, a church that is open to anyone without any qualifications or any stipulations.
I'm Don. I serve in multiple churches as a certified lay speaker and I serve on the board of Asbury Hills and other camps. And these are the experiences that frame my perspective. The United Methodist Church has allowed homosexuality in their leadership and done marriages for over 20 years. Even though it's against the church rules. I visited Glide United Methodist in San Francisco. It was predominantly homosexual. It was the most uncomfortable experience in worship in my life. I learned that I'm not comfortable around people who represent beliefs and value systems completely different than mine. Church growth relies on young families choosing to worship where they feel comfortable. They pick a church where they, that they think's best for their children. Or they pick no church at all. As a grandparent in this church, I want to see the church be a safe place of learning that makes their lives better through faith. When Asbury Hills was asked, how are we gonna accommodate transsexual and homosexual campers? Our answer was simple. We don't talk about sex at camp. And we have two boxes you can check because we accommodate boys and girls. You gotta pick one. If the words prohibiting homosexuals and transsexuals are removed from the Book of Discipline, it won't mandate that we have to allow homosexual marriage or accept political sex activists in our pulpit or on our staff. I'm ready to stop talking about sex in church. People who want political activists in the pulpit have plenty of places that they can go worship nearby here. We are not one of those churches. We have two choices. We can stay in the United Methodist Church, knowing the Book of Discipline has become a book of suggestions. Or we can leave and pay what I think of as the bishop's ransom. We don't need a complicated discernment method that involves lawyers and paying out a million and a half dollars of 10% of the assets to know who we are. My friends in other states, some of which are pastors, uh, did not require the 10% ransom. This is a South Carolina Methodist thing. They paid for two years of apportments and they paid for pension obligations, which is fair. Without a ransom, leaving the United Methodist Church would be an easy decision just to escape the sex talk that won't go away. But because there is a ransom of more than a million and a half dollars that we do not have, it would be better in my view to stay in the United Methodist Church and Buncombe Street. Uh, they, they have a membership with lawyers and they decided that they, they were willing to pay 3.2 million dollars to leave the United Methodist Church instead of fighting legally the, the bishop's ransom. The only thing that I see that the Methodist Church controls here is the pastor appoint. We control what we pay the pastor. We control how much we pay in apportments and how much we individually donate. We pick our church Sunday School curriculum. We determine the rules for the use of this church. When my daughters got married in our church, there were lots of rules that we were not allowed to do things because we have rules about how you gotta use our church. So let's take a position. Let's take the same position we've always had. This is our position from my view. Memorial is a church where we worship and teach and provide opportunities to serve based on the life of Jesus. We believe in prayer and fellowship. Excellence in worship is a core value. We have traditional and contemporary worship settings. We have Sunday School for all ages and a dynamic youth program and a preschool program and ministries for older adults. Our mission focus is local and very hands-on. Our church believes in traditional marriage. We don't talk about sex in church. Our goal is to provide a safe place where families continuously learn to live as the Bible prescribes. To me, that's us. We can't control what's done in the rest of the United Methodist Church. We can control what we do here. We are not the best choice for people who insist on talking about sex in church. I pray that we move on and be the church we are. Let's be the best choice for young families in Greer. Let's set clear expectations for new pastors, requiring preparation and quality delivery and knowing who we are. I'd like to tell people that Memorial Methodist has adopted our position and we officially moved on.
Chairman, I haven't heard the comments tonight. I don't think I have anything I can add to that. I may defer my comments to later or maybe have a second later.
Okay. Thank you. Robbie?
Don took half of your time anyway.
I think I know most of you here, but my name is Robbie Septon. Um, and, and this is, this is hard for me. It's not hard for me to get up and speak in front of all of you and I'm glad that there's a large group here, but it's always, always a pleasure for me to be able to stand in front of you guys to speak. And today's no different than, than any other time, but it, but it is deep, different than what we're talking about tonight. So I'm thankful for the leadership, thankful for giving us an opportunity to speak. I did not grow up in this church. Um, I'm not what you would call a lifelong member of Memorial, but in my life for a long time, Memorial has meant a lot to me. And, uh, when I moved over and, and decided to become a, a member of Memorial, along with pledging my gifts, my ties, my talents, my time, I also, uh, agreed to uphold the Book of Discipline. And for me, that was really important because I felt as if the Methodist Book of Discipline at the time which I moved my membership was about as close as I can imagine aligning my faith and what it is that, that I looked for in a church is, is with that Book of Discipline. Most recent debates over changing that Book of Discipline and the pending vote in 2024 has the United Methodist Church anything but united. Ultimately, the most adequate adjective that I can describe my feeling is sadness. I've kept up with the rumblings that have gone on within the Methodist Church and I've reflected on where we'll land as a congregation. However, this issue's become so much bigger than homosexuality. For a long time, I was firmly planted in the wait and see camp. And I believe that's largely because I didn't wanna rock the boat. I didn't want to see us go to a vote and have a split or see division within our church. So I landed on that, we'll just wait and see. Maybe it'll, maybe it'll turn out into the favor of, we won't change the Book of Discipline for where I stand in my beliefs. But that's changed somewhat. And, uh, I think it's changed in large part because of the leadership within the Methodist Church. And they've made it impossible for us not to have these conversations. The wait and see approach doesn't exist anymore. I've watched members already leave, uh, because I think doing nothing spoke louder than doing something. And with that said, with the number of Methodist churches closing and choosing to, or choosing to disaffiliate growing almost daily, I begin to wonder if the knee jerk reactions from our state leaders changing the rules in the middle of the game is a direct reflection to the fact that they feel as if their back is against the wall. And that pressure is coming and it's coming and it's coming. And I really worry, what if there is no sunset pause? What if this vote happens in 2024 and there is no opportunity for us to disaffiliate, for us to go through the discernment process, for us to have these conversations anymore? They've proven that they're willing to change the rules in the middle of the game. They did it to us just a couple of weeks ago. Now we're left with scrambling to get together information before December the 1st. So my faith in what the leadership within the Methodist Church will do is starting to dwindle. Then I think about the leadership within the Methodist Church and what they've done for us here at Memorial. Perry, you know, I speak to you independently every week. This is not a knock to you. Perry knows that I'm thankful for him and he knows that I love him because I've told him that. But I'm thinking over the last five years, the last 10 years, what has the Methodist Church done for us? Cause when I- Because when I look out, this is the leaders that I see within our church. And so it has been wondering, are we better equipped to follow the leadership within the Methodist Church or the leadership that's sitting in this room? What's better for Memorial when we go forward? Not today, not tomorrow, for my children's children. Lastly, I'll say this, I've been hung up on the financial aspect. We've all talked about it a little bit. And using the words throwing away a million and a half dollars, that's exactly what it is. Because if we were to choose to disaffiliate, it's almost downright criminal what the Methodist Church in the state of South Carolina has decided that they'll do to those congregations. And I think stork is a great word, where they take ten percent of our money, ten percent of our property value. And I'll say, we are asset-rich here as a church. What I mean by that is we have very, very, very beautiful grounds. We have a sanctuary that I would say is the prettiest in the state, maybe in the country. And I'm a little bit partial. We have a parsonage that is stately and updated. We have a family life center that houses the best child enrichment program anywhere around. We have a rock house that's been renovated. It's a work of art. We have an adjacent lot where we can continue to grow. But let me tell you about those church grounds. None of them, not a one of them, called me when my dad died. None of them were there when Lauren and I had a miscarriage. They don't get together on Tuesday mornings to sue in cards of encouragement. We are the church. We will continue to be the church. It's our time. We get to call the shots now. We don't have to be bashful about it anymore. So if that means we have to leverage, leverage some of our assets to ensure that we're going to be around for our children and our children's children, then I think it's high time that we start to have polling. We start to put together surveys to know where we stand. And ultimately, we're, we're in that process now. That's why we're here tonight. Is because we need to know what the future of, of Memorial looks like. I want to be here for a long, long time. And I hope that everybody else is here for a long time too. But the reality of it is that there, we're gonna lose some members over this, one way or the other. And we've got to stop being bashful about it. We need to understand where we are and where we're going. And I ask that we really put a lot of consideration into putting together some surveys so that we do know not only where everyone stands, but I hope that there's a question in there that allows for you to say whether you're gonna stand with us. And, uh, thank you for your time.
I'm Adam. I'm usually behind all of you. In fact, that's actually where I came from. So I think y'all know I try to be a funny guy. This will not be one of those times. So, uh, I didn't write anything down because I really didn't know what I was gonna say tonight. I've been thinking about it for a while, what to say, what would be meaningful. And I'm still thinking about that when, uh, when I walked in here. I want to be really clear with everyone. And this is not a four-letter word. I am ideologically liberal. Most of you know this. This is not a surprise for a lot of you, especially people who are my age. They know this. And there are people in our congregation who are right-thinking. And there are people who are right, who are left-thinking. And there are people in the middle. And that's okay. So let me tell you what I do have. We've been talking a lot about our church and our families. Let me tell you about me. And this is really nervous to say, but I have doubts. Okay? I have doubts about humanity. I have doubts about where we live. I have doubts about myself. I have doubts about my faith. And I've had these discussions with Samantha that I have trouble experiencing joy. I have trouble experiencing sadness. What I don't have doubts about is you. The entire congregation. I want you to look around. Don't look at me. I want you to look at each other. Together, this is our congregation. It's not one of you. It's not some of you. It's all of you. So earlier this week, I was thinking like, what are, what are our values? What are my values? My family's values? And we really do have four core values. Service, sacrifice, respect, and love. And I think a lot of us know about service and sacrifice. You know, we are, why are we here? We're here to help each other, to love each other, and for the betterment of humanity. All of humanity. With respect, we're here to respect everyone. People on the left, people on the right, people in the center. That's why I'm here. I'm not here because I want to be around people who look just like me in the mirror. I want to be around people who look like everyone. So one thing that I've thought about, and you know, those of us in the, uh, back of the service, we can see a lot of things. And in the sanctuary, you see all the, and I wish we were in the sanctuary right now, see all the stained glass windows. And no doubt, you've looked at these. You've looked at the image of Jesus in the front. You've seen the ones on the side, the ones with the Alpha, the Omega, the Ten Commandments. But in the back corner, next time you go in there, I want you to see the one that we don't always look at, which is a dove, is peace. And I've always loved that image. Because it's not about division. It's not about exacting anything. This is about peace. And peace is love. Service is love. Sacrifice is love. Jesus is love. And Samantha's always told me that God is love. What I fear is that the direction we are going down, which some of you have definitely expressed up here, one way or the other, if we move forward in any direction beyond staying the course, we will lose people. We will create division. This is not a church of division. This is a church of peace. So looking at this, thinking of my core, my four core values for our family, I have to think of a future when someone says, well, why is your church not in the United Methodist Church anymore? And my core values are the antithesis of we left because we, we could not address the question of homosexuality. I've had this discussion with Samantha and we cannot reconcile this. So I know I'm a little selfish. I talked about me and my family. And I know a lot of you talked about the church and the greater church. The thing about it is you guys are my family. And I want to do everything I can to keep us all together, every single one of us. So, um, someone speaking after me? Yes. Well, thank you for your time. I'm sorry, no jokes. And now for something completely different. Many of you may be wondering what is happening in a Methodist world? And why are we talking about disaffiliation? While things seem to have been sane and stable at Memorial over the past several years, Zed and I have seen the other side of the changes in the United Methodist world. In 2014, we moved to the Dallas, Texas area and joined Arapahoe United Methodist Church. It was a progressive church, but for a variety of reasons, we remained active members for several years. Things took a dark turn in 2018 when our nice young pastor took a sabbatical to, to return to seminary and finish her education. She returned as a social justice warrior, a term that is now referred to as woke. Terms like the oppression oppressor narrative, heteronormativity, intersectionality, cisgender, marginalized communities, lived experience, and white nationalism peppered sermons and other communications. I know something about the Bible and those terms aren't in it. Upon researching these terms, I learned they are part of the divisive neo-Marxist movement of wokeness that is rapidly growing in this country. This movement is man-made, anti-God, and has no place in the Christian church. Yet no disciplinary action was taken by the bishop, district, or conference. Shockingly, this pastor is seen as a rising star. One of the AUMC women's group did a study of the book White Fragility. Instead of covering Christian content, a lenten study topic was the book Whiteness 101. Both books are thought by many to worsen race relationships by stating that being white is bad. No disciplinary, no disciplinary action was taken by the bishop, district, or conference. In the run-up to General Conference 2019, the leaders of AUMC were certain that one church plan was going to prevail and that full acceptance of homosexuality in the United Methodist Church was going to happen. When GC 2019 upheld the traditional plan, this pastor and other leaders of the church went into open rebellion. AUMC and many other churches in the North Texas Conference took out a full-page rainbow flag advertisement in the Dallas Morning News stating that we are not that United Methodist Church. These churches chose to act in complete defiance of the decision made at General Conference 2019 to uphold the Book of Discipline. Again, no action was taken by the bishop, district, or conference. There are many other examples of wokeness that occurred at Arapahoe United Methodist Church during our time there, but for the sake of brevity, I will not get into them. In October of 2019, I started attending a more traditional United Methodist Church. It was a relief to hear Christian values being preached without being intertwined with woke terminology. In November of 2019, I attended a simulcast event of the Wesleyan Covenants Association's Global Gathering. The WCA is the group that founded the Global Methodist Church. I was blown away by the commitment to Christ that was demonstrated in the speeches and music. No divisive social justice rhetoric was spoken. And even though I knew nobody in that building, I felt completely at home. I have spent too many hours of my spare time studying wokeness and following the goings-on in the United Methodist Church. Christianity brings people together for the worship of the triune God and for the salvation through our Lord Jesus Christ. Wokeness puts, pits people against each other based on race, gender, and sexual preference. Wokeness and Christianity simply cannot exist in the same space. It has become apparent that many, many other United Methodist conferences are going the way of the North Texas Conference and displacing traditional Christian teaching with the caustic tenets of wokeness. I simply have little confidence that the, the United Methodist Church will uphold traditional biblical values in the coming days. I support disaffiliation and hope that we can work towards entry in the Global Methodist Church. That's it.
So, once again, thank you for coming and your attention. A lot of good points made and shared here tonight. I hope you'll give prayerful thought to what you've heard and talk among yourselves about where we go from here. Um, remember this Sunday, uh, during the 10:00 AM Sunday School hour, uh, we're gonna have a combined adult, uh, class in the social hall to hear Jessica Brody. Uh, even if you don't currently attend the Sunday School class, uh, you're encouraged to come and listen to what promises to be a, a meaningful lesson. So I hope you'll, you'll come to that as well. Um, Jessica will have some good things to share. Laney's gonna dismiss us with a prayer. And if you're able, uh, if you would, uh, pick up your chair and put it on the rack when we're through here, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Bow your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, you are gracious and you are mighty. We love you and we praise you. God, we come before you tonight together with humble hearts as we try to decide where we go from here. But God, most importantly, I am thankful that we are here. Every single one of us in this space. Regardless of what we believe, regardless of what we've been taught and what we think we should continue to teach, I am thankful that we are together in the church that raised us, in the church that continues to raise itself. God, you have given us a task of moving forward into the world to create disciples in your image. And you have given us the gift of free will that comes with that. I hope that as we leave this place today and our conversations continue the way that they should, that you will guide our hearts, our actions, and our words to glorify and reflect you in everything we say and everything we do. I ask that you continue to remind us of how you love us and how you have called us to love others. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.